This Tuesday, May 6th, North Liberty Planning Commission meeting to order. Can I get a roll call, please, Stacy?
Hey, Hern.
Here.
Baffkey.
Here.
Janiezer.
Here.
Heisler.
Here.
Willer.
Here.
Ward. And Yadi.
Item 1A, getting over pneumonia, so bear with me if I have a coughing fit here. I'm going to do my best to hold this together. Number two, can I have a motion to approve the agenda, please?
Oh, we do. I move to approve the agenda.
I'll second. Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? No, good. We'll move on to public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so now. Any public comment?
It's a little better.
Great. Seeing none, we're going to move on to item number four. Preliminary site plan, request of Iowa City Area Christian School Association to approve a preliminary site plan for two temporary classrooms and related infrastructure on approximately 22.09 acres. The property is located at the southeast corner of Hackberry Street and Juniper Court. Russ, do you have a presentation for us?
I do just a brief one, and I'll try and keep things moving this evening. This property is owned RS6. Obviously, we all know that the school is there. It's a public semi-public on the future land use map. The school headaches, we've been talking for quite some time, a couple of months now, and they expressed a need to temporarily locate two classrooms while they plan and ultimately construct a permanent addition for their school. So we went through the site plan process. I've told them, I'll tell you, you know, one concern we have is just, and I think I used the term more than once, you know, temporary means not permanent. And so that's a concern that we had. So we talked about a site plan agreement or a condition, if you will, that it lasts for three years. They've agreed to that. They've submitted, basically saying, we agree to this condition in writing, so when we forward it to the council, that won't be a problem. So, you know, pretty, we've seen these temporary buildings. The Iowa City schools do them all the time, so we thought it absolutely wouldn't be fair to allow the schools to do it and not allow a private school to do it. So as long as the condition for the ultimate removal and restoration of that area is provided for, we don't have an issue. So we do, the preliminary site plan achieves consistency with approval standards, and we recommend the planning commission accept the listed finding and forward the request to the city council with a recommendation for approval. And then it would be subject to that condition that the temporary classrooms be removed from the area, contain the, and related infrastructure, and restore to landscape petition honor before July 31st. That gets them a little over three years and then gets you through the school year. And so it gives you plenty of time to plan, permit, and construct, we think, a permanent addition.
Great. Thanks, Russ. How about an applicant presentation?
Good evening. I'm Brian Goodbar. I'm the head of school at Heritage Christian School, and I've really appreciated the communications I've had with Russ and sharing the plans that we have. We, people use the phrase, we were the best kept secret in North Liberty, and it's not so secret anymore. And I think everybody's aware, the ESAs have been a significant factor in our enrollment, and it's definitely boosting. So we are anticipating up to 240 students next year coming up from 215. And we are working with a firm out of Texas to start a capital campaign and anticipate that probably taking about 18 months, with probably then the other 18 months to be the construction.
Okay.
Yep.
Great.
Yep.
We'll let you know if we have questions as we
Okay. Thank you.
Confers. Commission up here, all right. Thank you. Are there any public comments? So feel free to come forward, okay? All right, how about questions and comments from the commission?
So how many students will the two temporaries hold?
There will be a total of four classrooms, and we will peak at 20, so it can hold up to 80.
Oh.
One point of discussion that we had is, you know, how come, you know, why was the north side of the building chose and maybe not the back? As I understand it, the plan would be to construct a permanent addition on the south side, and so that was the reason for the location on the north side.
So you'll start design work within the 18 months that you're raising funds?
We have, come up to that.
Sure, come on up.
Thanks. We have actually contracted with FRK, who did Grant Elementary School, and we have preliminary drawings already, so we've moved ahead on that in the background, so.
Okay. Thanks. Any other questions or comments? Some really straightforward questions. Russ has done the heavy lifting here. Can I get a motion to make a recommendation to the city council?
I move that the planning commission accept the two listed findings and forward the, am I on the right thing?
Here it is.
Oh, yeah. Accept the listed finding and forward the preliminary site plan to the city council with a recommendation for approval, subject to the condition recommended by city staff.
I'll second. I have a motion and a second. Stacy, can we have a roll call, please?
Heisler.
Aye.
Willer.
Aye.
Janiezer.
Aye.
Ahern.
Aye.
Baffkey.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item five. Preliminary subdivision plat, request of Bowman Property LLC to approve a preliminary subdivision plat for a four lot subdivision and related infrastructure on approximately 26.44 acres. Property is located at the northeast corner of West Forever Green Road and South Kansas Avenue. Russ, do you have a presentation for us?
Just another brief one. This is the second phase of Forever Green Estates subdivision. You can see its location in, you, some of this property has been the subject. We've talked about the assisted living facility going on, kind of the southeast portion of this property. So this brings forward the plat and the streets and the public infrastructure that would need to be dedicated to the city to allow for that development. Property zoned RM12, RM21, and C2. The future land use map designation is urban medium intensity and urban high intensity. And just four rather large lots, pretty straightforward, 26.44 acres. Notably, the access on Julia, which is the main north-south street. Originally, when we looked at the subdivision, we didn't, where it wasn't planned for Julia to extend south to Forever Green Road, we've since allowed that, but you will see there's actually a median in there, so it'll function as a right-in, right-out only. And we've just planned for that area to be sodded, allows for future areas for beautification once we kind of put together kind of a corridor plan for that area. But, you know, we kind of envision it looking like Rancho Way and obviously done a nice job there, so. Pretty straightforward request. We did have a virtual Good Neighbor Meeting on February 17th. No one outside city staff or the applicant attended. We don't have any objections to the request. We do have two findings, and we recommend that you accept those two listed findings and forward the request to city council with a recommendation for approval. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Russ. Do we have an applicant presentation tonight?
Hi, Chris Thompson, MS Consultants here representing the applicant. No, I think I'm just here to answer any questions if anything comes up. Thanks, Russ.
Sounds good. Any public comment on this agenda item? All right, seeing none. How about questions or comments from staff, or from staff, excuse me, from the commission?
Maybe I missed it. How many units are in there? Well, there's four lots.
Four lots.
And depending on, you know, you have the assisted living on the southeast side. You have a, the next agenda item is a preliminary site plan on the north, what would be the northeast side, and then the two lots on the west are no plans for those right now.
Okay. Little ahead of myself. Anything else? Three floors of subdivision. Yeah, all right. Heavy lifting has been done, okay. Can I get a motion for a recommendation to the council?
I move that the planning commission accept the two listed findings and forward the preliminary subdivision plat to the city council with a recommendation for approval.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Can we get a roll call, please?
Heisler.
Aye.
Ahern.
Aye.
Willer.
Aye.
Baffkey.
Aye.
Janiezer.
Aye.
Great. Moving on to item six, excuse me. Request of Donovan Land Development LLC to approve a preliminary site plan for 16 townhouse units and four buildings and related infrastructure on approximately 3.47 acres. This property is located at the southeast corner of Harland Street and Julia Drive. Russ?
Okay, so this is the northeast lot zoned RM12, future land use map designation urban medium intensity, so zoning is consistent, a little bit of a tight lot, so you just really have a linear development here. You have 16 townhouse units and four buildings, private kind of driveway with garages accessing off of those, so it's a really straightforward request. Similar looking design that we've seen in the past, and I'll remind you that the state now restricts our ability to regulate these types of buildings from an exterior cladding standpoint, so the fact that they're offering masonry is what I would call a bonus. So again, meet, achieves consistency with approval standards, and we recommend you accept that list of finding and forward the request to city council with a recommendation for approval.
Thank you, Russ.
Thank you.
Applicant presentation.
Chris Thompson, MS Consultants here representing the client again. You're happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any public comments on this agenda item? All right, seeing none. Bring it up to the commission.
Does this just mirror what is to the west of it already?
I don't think it's directly to the west. I think it's to the north.
North, is that what it is?
Yes.
But, I mean, they, it's the same building.
Yep. Yeah, you could see the lot line to the north there. It's pretty similar.
Okay.
No questions? No comments? Questions? Okay, all right.
I move that the planning commission accept the listed finding and forward the preliminary site plan to the city council with a recommendation for approval.
I'll second that motion.
Great. Got a motion and a second. Stacy, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Janiezer.
Aye.
Baffkey.
Aye.
Willer.
Aye.
Ahern.
Aye.
Heisler.
Aye.
All right. Item number seven, zoning map amendment. What's, request of Watts Development Group for a zoning map amendment, rezoning from ID interim development district, RS6 single unit residence district on approximately 26.29 acres, RS9 single unit residence district on approximately 34.81 acres, RD10 on approximately 26.93 acres, RM12 on 7.65 acres, and RM14 on approximately 8.07 acres. This property contains approximately 103.75 acres and is located on the west side of South Dubuque Street, approximately 300 feet south of Juniper Street.
And I, I'm sorry for all of that.
That's all right.
But you did a great job.
We got to do it.
Yeah. So these next two agenda items, we broke them out to west, so we'll call this west, and then the next agenda item will be east. I figured with a barrier like, you know, Dubuque Street coming right through the middle, you know, some folks may only care about what happens on the west side, or some people might just care about what happens on the east side. So it just, even though, and I'll say that most of the presentation that I give, I'll repeat, I won't try and repeat much of it, so I'll skip over the stuff that I would repeat, but that was the reason. It just seemed like Dubuque was an arterial road, and it just made sense to do these as requests. So first one will be west, so we'll talk about that one first. And here's a zoning map that kind of just shows different colors, but different zonings that you have there. You know, we have the RS9, which is the blue, the brown is RD10, the purple is, light purple is RS9, the darker purple would be an RM12, and then the yellow would be an RM14, which is a newer district. I can tell you, originally, the request included the yellow being an RM21. Based on some of the input we received from the Good Neighbor Meetings, they revised that down to be something a little less dense, and we thought that was appropriate. Current zoning is ID interim development, and interim development is just a holding pattern until a zoning happens. The comprehensive land use, future land use is urban low intensity, urban medium density, and parks open space P. And here's a concept plan that they've provided, shows connectivity to the stub streets to the west, shows along the south, that would be Tartan Street extended, so that would ultimately, when built out, would connect up Tartan Street, and it has one access in the middle. And so that's kind of how a concept is. I promise you one thing, that this thing will change. I don't think it'll change dramatically, but, you know, this is their best guess. I think the preserve over there by Centennial Park is half of the size, and it's been building out for several years, so this is, you know, depending on how the market goes, you know, and ultimately, if it gets approved, could be, you know, 10, 12, 15 years ultimately to build out. It's a big piece of property, so it's going to take a while, and they may need to come back as things change and come back for individual rezonings. But this was their attempt to provide a concept and zonings that they felt was, that fit the area and kind of met some of the design requirements that we had as well. We had actually two Good Neighbor Meetings on this one, since it was so large. We had one in person on March 12th, and then we did a virtual Good Neighbor Meeting on the 26th, and we kind of did them on either side of spring break, just so we could try and maximize attendance, and we had really good attendance at both meetings. There are about 40 people in the in-person and 40 on the, on the virtual meeting. So we had really good attendance, which is always very encouraging. You know, some of the things, and I've kind of broken out these as topics to talk about, but zoning compatibility, intensity, stormwater drainage, traffic impacts, impact of the proposed development to the transportation system, number of access points to Dubuque Street, traffic calming, school-related traffic, construction traffic, and parks and open space, and I'll talk about those in a second. I kind of wanted to give you an idea of how this matches our comprehensive plan. You know, most of it was low intensity and medium intensity, and I just want to note that in the comprehensive plan, we talk about these map designations being kind of fuzzy lines. You know, you're not, it's rare to see somebody respect ultimately a line that's drawn through a piece of property. We don't expect that at all. But what I wanted to do is give you an idea of, from a density standpoint, how that matched up to what the land use is. So, you know, we have 52.08 acres of urban low intensity, and urban low intensity is between five and eight units to the acre. Based on that acreage, that would be between 260 and 416 units. You have 48.53 of urban medium intensity, and that is seven to 14 units to the acre. That would be from an allowable density, 339 to 679. And then you have parks open spaces, which you wouldn't expect any units there. So based on the densities that the future land use map allows, that would be between 599 and 1,095 units, and that range would be between 5.77 and 10.55 units to the acre. Still with me? All right. Then we looked at, you know, with, based on the zoning that they have, you know, RS6 permits 7,000 square foot lots, they have 26.29 acres of RS6. If you divide 7,000 by 43,560, which is an acre, you get 6.22 units to the acre. That gives you 163 units. 56 units are shown on their concept plan because it accounts for stormwater drainage and streets and things like that. RS9 permits 4,500 square foot lots, and that equates to, at a maximum, if you just had no streets or anything, 336 units. 136 are shown in their concept plan. With the RD10 permits 4,500 square foot lots, would permit a maximum of 260, 70 are shown in their concept plan. You have 7.65 units of RM12, which is 12 units to the acre, that could be a maximum of 91 units. 14 units to the acre, that's a maximum of 112. The maximum number of units, based on lot size restrictions of just the zoning, that would be a maximum of 962 units, or 9.27 units to the acre, which they'd never get, because you got to build public streets and stormwater retention and things like that. The number of units shown on their concept plan is 465. That equates to 4.48 units to the acre. The developer's estimate unit count was 443, so we're pretty close. That's 4.27. And then there's 14.9 acres of green space, stormwater detention, and you'll remember we had like 3.4 as parks open space on there. So it just gives you an overall, like, idea of what the range, so if you're at less than five, overall for the property, you're in a, you're in what we would consider a low, low intensity. You know, if you're up higher, you know, 814 or something like that, you're more in the medium range. But overall development, considering the mix of ranges they have, we're a pretty low density standpoint. So it's our opinion that they meet the, achieve consistency with the comprehensive plan designations. Now, those are the two big ones, right? From a zoning approval standpoint, the two top ones are compatibility, consistency with the comprehensive plan, so we've gone through that, and then compatibility with the surrounding zoning. So you could see predominantly, you see RS6 on the west predominantly. You see some RS, you see RS4 on the north. Obviously, you have Dubuque Street down south, actually is white, because it's actually in the county. I thought they did a pretty good job. They came in and wanted to respect the borders that they have. You know, you have single-family homes around to the north and to the west, and even including single-family on the south, so they wanted to respect those boundaries to be consistent or compatible with that zoning, and then internalized, and then increased density as you get close to an arterial road, which makes perfect logical sense. You know, stormwater drainage, we talked about that. It's always a concern when we talk about these zoning processes, but, you know, this is in an area where some developments have stormwater detention, others don't. I know Heritage Christian School has a stormwater detention, but the area to the north does not, and so we think by accepting that water into their development, they're going to actually improve the stormwater runoff. And I've shown some arrows of generally how the property drains on that west side. We did talk about, you know, a big question is, you know, can this area, can Dubuque Street handle this development from a traffic standpoint? I will say, you could see on the screen, it's hard to read, but on the left, there is 2018 traffic counts, and on the right is 2022 traffic counts. What they actually showed was the traffic counts in 2022 on Dubuque Street actually decreased, and that's because North Liberty Row was improved and more people started taking North Liberty Row to get the high school, but that makes sense. I will note that right now, from the south in North Liberty, Juniper Street is the only east-west connection that you have, so you got to come up Dubuque Street to get to Juniper to get over to Front Street. So we have asked, requested the developer, I know they are working on a traffic impact study from a traffic engineer. The preliminary results are showing that this will not cause, and I'm going to talk about this next, will cause a deficiency to Dubuque Street. It'll show kind of how that traffic spreads to the traffic, to the transportation system, but it'll also recommend kind of operational recommendations for intersections. Talk about level of service for streets. You know, it's basically an A through an F. You know, A, B, and C are kind of a free-flowing condition. D and E start to get full, and then F is failing, where we've all been on a road where it's like you can't even go the speed limit, because there are so many roads. But, you know, a level of service measures basically how your ability to travel down that road. And it's, sometimes you think, and the only reason I'm showing this is like you say, okay, well, there's a street here, it's two-lane, and it should be, the maximum capacity of that road should be 16,000, and it's not that easy, because we pick as a community like what our level of service would be. Do we want our level of service to be a maximum of C or D? Some places say, okay, it's E, and that's pretty congested. But, you know, and so I just say it's not really that easy all the time. Other terms you'll hear is, like I said, maximum acceptable volume, AM peak or PM peak. The AM peak is when you would normally commute to work or you'd go home, and likely when you probably get most frustrated being in traffic. This was from the NPO office, and again, it shows the AM and PM peak. I just drew a line that shows on the AM peak along Dubuque Street is a B, and then the PM peak was like an A currently. Now, again, we're going to rely on the traffic study to show that the project can demonstrate that it won't cause a deficiency or anything like that. I just kind of want to talk about some of these traffic terms. And, you know, when you think about how traffic moves, if you have a lot of intersections, like, so on arterial roads, we want to limit the number of accesses we have on an arterial road, because the more accesses you have, it actually creates a congested feeling, and you're not able to move down that road, and that's what decreases your level of service. And so I think we've heard some comments out there, well, gee, there's only like, we see two accesses, and that's going to be a problem. And so, you know, there may be some operational things that we need to consider at that intersection, but that's actually preferable. If you start putting a lot of more intersections out there, you're actually going to increase the congestion through there. There's a couple of other things that we're working on to alleviate congestion on Dubuque Street. The one that's going to be happening sooner is in 2028, fiscal year 2028. That's for sections three and four, and four would be in front of this development. You know, three is, you can see it in red there, that's a complete reconstruction of that section of the road, and that would include a roundabout at Juniper. And we really think that's going to improve the congestion through that area, particularly around those side streets. Four would be what we call a mill out in an overlay, but now that we have this development and potentially a willing property owner, I think something that we would talk about is potentially a roundabout at the Tartan intersection. That's going to be a cut-through, and we know it is. It's just, it is going to be. Phase two, we recently were, indicated that we were awarded a grant, that would be fiscal year 2031, and that is the segment just south of Zeller, up to the section over here that we just completed, but that would be a complete reconstruction, and that would also include a roundabout at Zeller. And so that three-way stop there would no longer exist, so that is able to keep traffic free-flowing there. Lastly, we continue to work on Forever Green Extension, and that would be from the middle school out to First Ave in Corleville. This is a 50-50 joint project with us and the city of Corleville. This is a very expensive project. I think we're estimating 20 million. We do have some federal funding for this. We did receive a small grant from the Metropolitan Planning Organization for Phase Two. Phase One is what we are planning for the federal funding on each end. Phase Two would bring us up to Naples, and then the last part, we still haven't planned yet. I don't have a timing for that, but, you know, these things, when we think about traffic, you know, this is huge when this comes through, and now people won't need to come up to Dubuque Street just to get over. They'll have another way to get across. So you'd have, ultimately, when Tartan is built, you know, now you don't have to go up to Juniper, you've got Tartan. I'm sure that's, grant will go that way, too.
I'm going to run my bike.
And then Forever Green Row, which is a big project. Ultimately, we expect Naples to come up. Naples is a small, private street, but Naples to be a public street and connect up to future Tartan Street is kind of what we're thinking. We also heard things about traffic calming on East Tartan Street. I know that's a concern, and what we're, you know, we're way too early in the process to talk about exactly what that looks like. We've talked to the developer a little bit, but I think there's opportunities in there to try and be creative, to do things, to constrict the road space a little bit, to try and force people to slow down. We haven't done it very much in other areas. I think this is a good opportunity to do it. It's a straight shot. You don't have a lot of opportunity to meander the street, and so just by nature of how roads are constructed, people will speed, and they will call us, and I'd rather try and, rather try and work on the design part of it than react to try and get enforcement or things like that. We did talk about school-related traffic, particularly during peak times. That's just something we don't have a lot of control over, but it's just kind of a school. I don't even want to call it a problem. It's just a minor inconvenience that happens a short period of time, a couple of times during the day. We've heard a lot about construction traffic, and I get it, right? A lot of people, particularly on the east side and Green Belt, have been living through construction for the past couple of years while their subdivision's built out. We just don't know the answers to that yet. You know, this is You know, these are big developments and they're going to be phased and we just don't know how those phases are going to be. And so I've, I've certainly been noncommittal, which has probably been frustrating to people, but I just, I'd be committing to something I have no idea about. You know, we're going to look at those individual phases when they come in and make the most appropriate judgment at that time. And I know the developers heard this too, so. We heard a little bit about parks and open space in this area. And I provided our parks and open space map. This is those, dark green is a quarter mile from existing parks and the light green is a half mile. You could see that most of this property is covered at least by green in a small area. So we don't need, see a need for park space here. We do have some publicly owned space over in the Broadmoor area. Where I do start to envision that we need park spaces a little bit as you go kind of southeast of that area. Towards the new Forever Green Road extension, we see some opportunities for a park space in that area. So we're trying to strategically space these. So we're, you know, you have proximity, you know, you got Penn Meadows there and then this would be another potential park. So we just didn't need, see the need for public park space. There will be a fair amount of private park space in this development though. And as always, I flash up kind of the unit mix that we have in the city currently, just to see. You know, I did hear people that wanted, hey, I want this subdivision to be all single family and that's fine. But I just, I think we have a good mix of housing. We look at the preserve as very much a success. We think that's, I think, a wonderful mix of housing. They've got basically all of these different types of housing mixes throughout their subdivision. And I, we think it works wonderfully. I don't have an issue with a mix of housing types within a subdivision. And I think it's, I think it's great. And I don't think this throws us out of balance or anything from, from our housing type. So we do have one finding that it achieves consistency with the approval standards. And we recommend you accept that listed finding and forward the request to the city council with a recommendation for approval. Thank you.
Good work, Russ. How about applicant presentation? You got it, Randy?
Yep. Randy Lang with Watts Group. Appreciate you having us this evening. Thought it made a little bit of sense to share a little backdrop or context about our organization. So you'll see here that we've been, we're a locally owned company, private company that's been in business since 1978. And we've been pretty active in development over the years. And some of the numbers on the screen just kind of speak to the work that we've done over time. And so hopefully that helps provide a little additional context on who we are. And really the next slide talks about what we're driven to do and that's create neighborhoods and communities that are attractive, attractive to the community. We love working in North Liberty. I'll share a little bit about some of the work we've done here in past years. But we're really excited to be here and we're excited about the project. The, these pins on the map kind of show you where we spend most of our time. North Liberty, Cedar Rapids, Solon, Tiff and Corleville, but primarily Johnson County. That's where we do and have done most of our work. You know, this, this speaks to some of the demonstrated work we've done in the community. And as Ryan had mentioned, the preserve is probably the most recent example of some of our work at Cloverhill and the preserve. You'll see, we started that in and around 2018. It was about 77, 78 acres. And so we're getting close to getting through that. And it's, you know, in total, it's going to end up being eight, nine years of work. So thought it'd be important to share some of this and some of the other subdivisions we've done in the past. And then, you know, as Ryan spoke about the variety of housing, you see the various zoning types. And this is an example of what we are aiming at here. We really want housing, housing varieties for all types of buyers. There's first time home buyers, there's maybe somebody that's buying for a second or third time. And then there's also, you know, the opportunity of somebody's downsizing. And so you have anywhere from two to three bedrooms, you know, up to five bedroom homes here with three car garage. And so these are some photos from not only North Liberty, but other housing developments in Johnson County that just showcases some of the product. And so the next few slides are just the different types of product. And really, hopefully that paints a picture. Thank you for having us and happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Randy.
Thank you.
All right. We had a lot of public comments in the packet. Everybody got a chance to take a look at those. We can open the floor to public comment here as well tonight on this agenda item. Anybody wants to come forward and give us your comment? If you'd mind introducing yourself, please.
Yeah, my name is Rob Hubler. I'm a resident on Yorkshire Street, property kind of north to, north and east of this proposed area. I did meet with Russ and at the meeting held here back in March, kind of talked about some of the things that was of concern to me. Two things in fact, one was obviously the traffic, the amount of flow of vehicles going up and down Dubuque Street. We're talking, you know, several thousand units being put in on both sides of Dubuque Street. Not to mention what's south of Dubuque Street, south of the high school, right? That, those cars are going to be coming up and down Dubuque Street as well too. So just the volume of traffic. I know that we talked about some mitigating ideas for that. What I also see, and I don't know if that's taken into consideration in some of the studies, is the traffic going through the residential areas. I live on Yorkshire Street that just got connected going over to the other side towards, was it North Liberty Road that comes along by the high school? And we're already starting to see traffic coming through right there. It's a shortcut to get over to Juniper and head over towards Hy-Vee and such. So I can see that being problematic as well too. When Berkshire gets connected, it'll be just a straight shot over there and we'll see more traffic trying to avoid the traffic that's on Dubuque Street by going through the residential area. So that's always a concern too. So not just the traffic on Dubuque Street, but within the residential area as people try to find alternate routes to avoid Dubuque Street to get where they need to go. My second concern is if you're looking at the map here in the yellow area, I believe the purple area is supposed to be those single family homes that we're talking about.
Correct.
Right. And then the yellow area is going to be those 12, 14 resident units. Seems in very close proximity to some of those homes. I would imagine people that are paying, what, half a million to $800,000 for a home, probably don't want to be close to someplace that's got, you know, apartment buildings right outside their house. So there's some concerns about that being along the road. I understand, the closer you get to those, those main routes, the density increases. And you know, you'd want to put those, if the traffic increases, you put those high density residents in that area. But just looking at this map and then seeing how some of this stuff is planned out, it seems to me like, you know, may have some issues with people not liking that idea. So I just want to share that. I think we talked about in the meetings, I'm just going to reiterate it. I think this also applies to the next item on the agenda as well too. But I just wanted to kind of share that with you guys.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rob. Any other public comment? Okay, seeing none. Open it up to, oh.
I'm Sue Jensen.
Oh, I'm sorry, jeez.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you snuck up on us. I apologize.
My name's Sue Jensen. My husband and I live on Ogden Lane, which will be directly connected to the new development. And we appreciate the fact that you have changed some of the zoning to RS six to match our subdivision. But we do have a big concern about the traffic, the construction traffic that will be coming down Psalm, which is the street directly behind us, which is right off of North Liberty Road. Those roads aren't really made for construction. And if you look at the map, you know, there's a lot of construction that will be happening. And I think that it would be really great if you could get a connection from Dubuque into the new area while it's being built, so that you're not impacting all of the houses. And there's a lot of kids that live on those streets that, you know, like to ride their bikes, walk. You know, they're all over the place. And we really don't want to see all the construction traffic down our roads. And I have the same concern as the gentleman that spoke before us, before me rather, is the density of the development. It just seems like for that area, there will be too many homes in the, in the yellow and the orange areas. But that, that's my concern, that and the traffic. So thank you for listening.
Thank you. I'm going to take a beat this time. One more, there we go.
John Chevalier, new resident on Ogden Lane. I'd just like to express my support, my concern, shared concern about traffic, the construction traffic that would be diverted into the area during the development of this area. And if we could find mitigations to ensure the safety of the children in the neighborhood, that would be greatly valued.
I failed to mention, and I shouldn't say surprisingly, but I would say construction traffic is probably the thing I've heard the most about. And it makes sense, right? We've got now establishing neighborhoods to the east and to the north. So the road in the middle that has, and I think this helps guide how some of the development or how it was developed, the road in the middle that, with the median in the middle, that's actually a road that goes up and goes into Greenbelt. I think that was part three, three and four, yeah, three. So it's, it's kind of, will be a main road into that subdivision. That was important to have that road kind of connect down. And we thought that would be a primary entrance on both sides. And I, so I think that may explain kind of how, why that density was put there. Cause there's, not only there's going to be a fair amount of traffic on Dubuque Street, we expect a fair amount of traffic from this development and the other developments coming out. Cause it'll be an easier way to get out to Dubuque Street. But just again, to reiterate, we've heard, I know Randy and Adam are here about construction traffic. It's just so hard to know early in the zoning process how, you know, these phases will, will be, you know, I think they're, they've at least indicated they'd start kind of in the northeast, I think. And then, and then kind of work their way phases down to Dubuque Street. We just, we just don't know at this point. So it's been so hard to just say. And again, I'm sure people are frustrated, like, why can't you give me an answer for that? We just, we just haven't even seen the phasing plan to say, well, what makes more sense to, you know, for development?
Sure. All right, thanks, Russ. Any other public comment? Going once, going twice, okay. I'm going to move on to questions and comments from the commission. And actually, Adam, well, I'm sorry, go ahead if you're ready.
Oh, I was going to say, that is a lot of density on Dubuque Street in the next, what, 15, 20 years or something like that. And yeah, I would, it would be interesting to see how the phasing of the development works. To see if you can't mitigate some of these issues with construction traffic.
Yeah. And I, we continue to believe, especially with traffic, you know, again, Forever Green Road is going to change. We think the Tartan Street connection, again, I think people coming from the east may come through Tartan and may not even come on Dubuque Street. You know, may, may come just through that section. So I think, you know, some, some things will increase the traffic and then some will, will kind of, kind of do this in the area, you know. But I, you know, I think some of the things that we probably, and I don't want to call them mistakes. It's just, these are, these are just things of how we grow, right? If we were really being proactive and looking at the number of units in Arlington Ridge and then understanding the connection that came when, when Juniper and Hackberry were ultimately connected, you know, it would have made, like, we would have thought like, boy, a roundabout there would make a lot of sense. But, you know, just, you know, armchair planner here is easy to say, you know.
I think these are all wonderful problems to have, right? I've been on P and Z long enough to say, Russ, why don't we have enough houses up here? You know, the biggest growing, fastest growing area. And it's a wonderful, and I've been talking to you about the mix. Not everybody can afford a nice, beautiful, single family home. So I'm really happy about the mix. But all of the concerns that were registered, that's exactly what, I guess, we turn to you to pay attention as the process goes. But I'm really happy with how this looks.
Interesting with this property, it just seemed like this was the property that would never develop. You'll never get people to, you know, the landowners to agree. And, and so I was more surprised.
We were going to look at craps for decades.
Yeah, anything to see like, hey, we, we think we might be coming forward with something. And, you know, the property immediately to the south that's in the county just didn't, I know that at least one of the landowners just was like, well, it doesn't make sense to come into the city now because there's, I just can't do anything. But, you know, this may open that potential up as well.
Yeah.
I was going to ask, I heard over the weekend, and I don't know how accurate it is, but the price per square foot essentially of RS six at this point, when you, you know, when you're talking four bedrooms plus three stall garage with the land in it, the number, I didn't believe it and I, I don't know if you know off the top of your head or could take a guess, but I've just, you guys were, a lot of the concerns about, you know, maybe the amount of purple on this map. And I, I hope I'm wrong, but I have a feeling that the days of big, single family developments are certainly over for a while. The idea of adding more homes of that size to a development of this size is probably not realistic because that buyer pool is so much smaller than it was just purely because of the sheer expense of all of it, infrastructure, everything that needs to go into it. But just that home itself, you're not, you're not buying that for probably less than 750. The one that you guys pictured up here, and it might be more than that, right, at this point?
Yeah, you know, you guys have seen us here before with the reserves. We had some phases in there and we changed the density of the streets to try and get to the RS. Because our lots needed to get smaller, the houses were getting smaller, going back to two car garages. Just so that people can get in. The price increases that we saw after COVID, which have not went away, are shocking. I mean, I know between 2019 and 2023, we saw over 20% cost increase in materials and labor. In a four-year period. Really crazy how quickly that went. Those people that bought during that period still look like these as property values continue to go up. But yes, the price per square foot of the homes and stuff. And Randy, you can tell me how long it's been, you're working at $250.
Yeah, and that's, yeah, which is, yeah, that's, 15 years ago was almost half that. So, yeah. So I mean, it's just when we saw a lot of these other subdivisions get cut in and developed.
The world's not the same.
It was just a different, it was just a different place. And I, and I do, and I think all, the comments that were presented tonight, the ones that we read via email, I think are all legitimate and valid. However, there are inconveniences and costs that come with growth. It's just a hard, it's a hard thing to deal with. I am a neighbor to this property, I'm on the west side. So I understand, I understand all of this completely. But at the same time, you know, our charge up here is to interpret the code or, you know, let staff basically interpret the code and let us know, you know, hey, is, can this be done? And are they achieving consistency? And I'm, I for one, am pleased to say that, or pleased to know that it's going to be a local developer here that's going to be doing this. Somebody who's clearly invested in the community. When I heard this was happening, I was, that was my first thought was, man, I hope it's somebody that we know. Because I don't want to see what's happening at Corleville happen. Certainly not next door to me, but I don't particularly like to see it in North Liberty either. So I've got a tremendous amount of faith in Watts Group and their, and especially too, that like what Russ said is 100% valid. Things are going to change dramatically. It may be real dramatically over the next five to 10 years as this thing really starts to take shape. Market forces are at play. And I think you guys, of anybody around here, appreciate and know what it's going to take to actually, you know, we can't, you're not going to sell units on a racetrack. It just doesn't, it doesn't work that way. So they've got skin in the game to help with traffic control. They know what's marketable, what sells. And I think a dangerous neighborhood is not going to be great for sales. So I've got confidence that, you know, you guys and staff is going to hold you accountable too, you know, on both counts. So I feel good about it in general with obviously those caveats that we know that growth is painful. It's just, it's just the way it is. And not everybody's going to be happy about it all the time. I'm not looking forward to construction traffic in my neighborhood either, but I lived with it for the first few years I was in my neighborhood as my subdivision was built out. So unfortunately, it's one of those things that comes with living in a growing community.
I dust my patio every day because of the construction dust. Yeah, I get it.
And just to add to what you said, if like, if this zoning ultimately gets approved by city council and they, they do say, okay, by city council, and they, they do say, okay, I need to go back and change something, they go back through this, right? We go through Good Neighbor meetings, we go through planning commission, we go through city council. So there, there still is that safeguard, if you will, of going back through that process. So certainly, it behooves them to try and get it right the first time. But, you know, they, they understand they need to go back through the entire process again if they want to change something.
Yeah, it's a good point, Russ. And it's also fair, I mean, that we've got a couple of city council members who are going to be very interested in, because this is going to affect them, too. So they're gonna be very interested in it. Not to hijack the pulpit here, but anybody else have any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you all for your public comment. And at this point, I'm going to open it up to a recommendation to the city council. Oh, yes. And I have a motion for a recommendation to the council.
I'll move that the Planning Commission accept the listed finding and forward the zoning map amendment to city council with a recommendation, recommendation for approval.
I'll second that motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Can we get a roll call vote? Stacy?
Willer?
Aye.
Heisler?
Aye.
Bafki?
Aye.
Janiezer?
Aye.
Ahern?
Aye.
Okay. Moving on to agenda item eight, the east side.
Yeah, please don't read that again.
All right, I won't read it.
Yeah, so this is just.
I was ready.
The east side, I think, I won't, won't reread my, my whole report there. But, you know, RS6 on 15.29 acres, RS9, 11.3, RD10 on 16.69, RM12 on 7.17, and RM14 on 8.05. This is about half the size of the west side. This is 54.49 acres. But obviously, a lot of newer development happening over on this side. Again, here's a zoning map. In addition to the RM21 that was changed on this side, reduced RM14 over at the northeast corner on Ogden, they had some RD10 properties that, that would have been extended. So you would have had this situation. For the most part, the RD10 mirrors the RD10 to the east. And one change that the Watts Group did based on public input was, you know, to continue that street as it went west to be single-family in their development. So we, we appreciated that. Again, ID, and then, and then you've got a little bit more of the property is, is medium intensity. But, again, I go through, I won't go through the whole thing again, but the rationale. But again, on the east side, if you do the, the number of units, you're at about six units to the acre. And you're at, if you use the developer's concept when you include streets and things like that, you're at 4.53 units to the acre. Again, you're on the lower end of what we consider density. So obviously, you have a consistency with the comprehensive plan. And again, trying to respect those, and you can see the, the yellow, the RS6, and continuing that to the RS6 over into their development. I'm trying to respect the zoning that's in the area to be compatible. Again, just shows drainage in the area. And again, I don't want to reiterate all of that stuff again, but a similar finding that it achieves consistency with approval standards and staff recommends, you recommend to the city council, accept the listed finding and forward it to the city council with recommendation for approval. Thank you.
Thanks, Russ. Randy and Adam, I assume we can come to you with questions if we have them? Thank you. All right. Public comments, you're welcome to. Okay. Okay, all right. Thank you. All right. Commission? Any additional questions or comments?
Mirror image of the last one.
Yeah, anything unique, any good neighbor comments unique to the east side?
No, they were, they were all pretty similar.
I thought.
I think I would say probably more on the east side, we had more concerns about the construction traffic. I would say west side, probably more concerns about, of Tarden, people are going to be cutting through on there. So I guess, you know, on the east side, a couple more, more street stubs over there. So makes sense. And I, you know, these are, these are newer homeowners that invested in that area, and that's, that's their little piece of heaven. And certainly, I understand why you'd be frustrated with, with construction equipment coming down your street. But again, it is something we'll look at when we, when we get into the construction plans. I've got a good email list going. I've been reaching out to people, and we have no problem sharing out what those construction plans look like when we get there.
Randy, Adam, do you guys have a sense, right, I mean, I realize, and I'm not going to hold anybody's feet to the fire on this one, but have a sense from a demand standpoint, if any of that, I mean, if you have a focus that's going to get filled out first on that east side?
Yeah, the northeast corner is probably where we're gonna start because it's more so dictated by sanitary sewer.
Makes sense.
But rather, we gotta start working from the bottom to the top sometimes easiest rather than connecting to it there and taking it all the way through the subdivision to another area. So more than likely, we'll be starting in that northeast corner, which gives us a mix right away of pure lots and single families. From there, depending on how much the market drives, we may go to the north and get the streets of single, all single families to butt up to Arlington, or potentially then what maybe to connect down to Dubuque Street.
Do you anticipate the streets coming in then east to west at that point, and then, and then working south from there? Okay.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns?
No, I just saw the stormwater retention. When I saw the, the arrows on the, yeah, there, I thought, oh, they're going out, out to the streets, or out to the other subdivisions. But I see where the mitigation is, right in those corners.
Okay. All right, if there's no other questions or comments, can I get a motion for a recommendation to the council, please?
I'll move that the Planning Commission accept the listed finding and forward the zoning map amendment to the city council with recommendation for approval.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Stacy, can we get a roll, roll call vote, please?
Sure. Willer?
Aye.
Janiezer?
Aye.
Bafki?
Aye.
Ahern?
Aye.
Heisler?
Aye.
Thank you all for your comments. Thanks. Brandon and Adam, appreciate it. Moving on to number nine, zoning code ordinance, request of the city of North Liberty for ordinance amending chapter 168 of the North Liberty Code of Ordinances governing commercial and industrial districts defined and dimensional standards in the use matrix table and chapter 173 of the North Liberty Code of Ordinances governing business and public use signs.
Okay, this, some of it supports the next agenda item, but this would add a zoning district called the Central Urban C3 District. And the idea, you know, the, the idea behind having setbacks and things like that in a, and when you have different ownerships is to create some uniformity through different owned properties. Consider, you know, we, we thought it would be appropriate to, to reduce, you know, we, we thought it would be appropriate to, to reduce the setbacks, to increase the intensity and density, to kind of create a different type of development. It's, it's, it's not going to be, you know, I think, you know, it's still in flux and things are changing. We're excited about it. But, you know, we want to give them the tools to reduce some setbacks, just not to create, you know, I don't see a need to have a 25-foot setback on Ranshaw Way when you've got, you know, our, our highest capacity road in the city outside I-380. You know, it just doesn't make a lot of sense. Why not push the buildings up there and, and create something that's a little more conducive to something different and pedestrian oriented? So we started with that. We are also removing an IP district. IP was something I created to kind of think through what the east property that is also will be coming forward soon. I kind of had a vision for, for maybe some flexibility to allow for some funky industrial things. And I created that, but it just never came to fruition, which is fine. You know, we're updating the use matrix, the, the use table to reflect the addition and deletion of those districts. And then we are amending the sign regulations, a specific section for public zones, and this is for Centennial Park, really. It was interesting that, that the P district had a reduced amount of signage. But what we're finding is, especially in like City Hall, like, we originally had, like, well, we could have a freestanding sign. And we were like, no, we really don't think we need a freestanding sign. Building mounted sign is what made more sense. So we just brought that in line with, with other commercial zoning classifications. So I could tell you the sign we're looking at right now for the IV event center is totally in scale with the building, and we'll, we'll support that as well. So constantly looking at the code and see if there's things that we could adapt or change to be, you know, to, to be kind of, I guess, modern. And that's what I'm trying to go for with the code. So those are the changes in a nutshell. Proposed amendment would achieve consistency with zoning code text changes. And staff recommends the Planning Commission accept that list of finding and forward the request to city council with a recommendation for approval.
Okay. Check off A and B here, correct?
Yeah.
Do you have another presentation to go with it? All right. Are there any public comments on this agenda item? All right, seeing none. Double checking. Questions, comments from the commission?
He just loves these minor details, doesn't he? Glad you're the man for the job.
I actually do have a question, though, and I realize that with the type of sign that we're, you're dealing with here, it's not, you're not projecting upwards, right? But do we have, what is our light? Like, do we have restrictions on?
Yeah.
One-foot candle.
Yeah.
Property line for commercial.
Yeah, we have, we have a measurement of light called foot candles, which we, so we'll look at photometrics. We require lights to be cut off so that the light source isn't, like, you know.
Downlighting, right?
Yeah, basically downlighting. We allow for art, we allow for uplighting kind of as a soft architectural lighting. So we want to encourage buildings to have, like, uplighting and things like that.
But for like a building mount sign, though, if the light, I mean, it's probably got to be the correct, like, it can't.
Yes.
Right, can't go past the.
Right, yeah, it can't be, yes, yes.
Okay.
And it can't be so bright that it's, like, I think I remember the new South Slope sign came in, and it was digital, and it was really bright. And we said, hey, can you guys, you gotta tone that down a little bit? Yeah. Yeah.
We encourage wacky waving, inflatable alarm flailing tube guys whenever possible.
Yeah.
You don't see the searchlights lighting up the clouds anymore as much. But I, that, so, but those restrictions apply to any.
Yes.
Okay, so it's not, it's not by type or use necessarily.
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
It's a long way.
Josie, my, my tag is, I like, you know, walks on the beach and amending zoning codes, you know?
The one-foot candle doesn't actually apply in residential, because that, that interferes with holiday lighting and stuff like that. So there's a, believe it or not, there's a carve-out, there's a carve-out for Christmas lights.
That's right.
Or whatever decoration you might like.
Holiday houses, oh, man.
But that, there are other restrictions on the kinds of signs you can have in residential districts. But the foot candle restriction that I mentioned doesn't apply in those, in those limited areas.
Yeah.
Otherwise, that'd be in the paper tomorrow.
Don't take advantage of that, folks.
Yeah, look what the city attorney changed, wanted, no Christmas lights.
It was legal. It's legal.
Any other questions, comments, concerns for?
I move the Planning Commission accept the listed finding and forward the ordinance amendment to the city council with a recommendation for approval.
I think it's a second.
I'll second that motion.
Don't make us read it again.
Roll call, please.
Sure. Heisler?
Aye.
Bafki?
Aye.
Willer?
Aye.
Ahern?
Aye.
Janiezer?
Aye.
Thanks, Russ.
I thought I earned academic credit just reading this paper this week.
All right, item 10, zoning map amendment, request of UCD Holdings LLC for a zoning map amendment zoning from C1B General Commercial District and C3 Higher Intensity Commercial District to CU C3 District Central Urban Higher Intensity Commercial District in a preliminary subdivision plot for a seven-lot subdivision and related infrastructure on approximately 10.04 acres at North Cherry Street and Ranshaw Way.
Yeah, this is, this is exciting stuff. I mean, you know, this is a key piece of development property in the city. And again, this is, this is like, you know, it's finally here. We've been talking about it for a long time. We've, we've kind of the, the renewal area came for you guys. But now we're starting to see some of the lots and, and some of the development challenges that are, that are real here. And so, most of it is currently zone C3. It was actually at some time industrial, and we downzoned it, not, not maybe a couple years ago. And some of it's owned that C1B. So again, that zoning request to that CU C3, urban high intensity. So this is an area where we expect higher density and intensity development. Fuzzy lines here, but we have seven lots. There would be a private street that comes in that lines up with the development on the west side. And then the road kind of goes south and then lines up with Commercial Drive. Please remember, Commercial Drive will ultimately extend down to Zeller. That's a, that's a capital project that we have planned. There's a big drainage way, Liberty Center Pond ultimately drains this direction. There's a humongous pipe underneath Ranshaw Way, and they need to take that water and move it to the, to the east through there. And that certainly is an engineering challenge that MMS is working on. So we really looked at this. We feel good about it. The portion on the east adjacent to the Muddy Creek would be, we are expecting that to be dedicated to the city. I think ultimately, it's in the city's best interest. We've talked to a few property owners throughout there of just, you know, the Muddy Creek is actually owned by private properties. We would like to actually see, and we have public sewer through there, we have easements, we have trail easement, but we ultimately think we should, the city should be the one, if people are willing to sell or, or deed it over to us for maintenance, that we should be able to control to, to be able to maintain that. You know, there's a lot of cool opportunities, I think, through those of beautifying the Muddy Creek area and making that, enhancing that amenity that the city has. So again, this is a real fun project. There's a lot of things that still need to happen on this. And again, I'll reiterate, this is certainly one that, that I expect to change throughout this. It continues to evolve. Here's a, here's a more recent concept plan we've gotten that shows kind of a layout of where those buildings are. And again, shows some of those reduced setbacks, kind of taking advantage of that, which I think will give it a different character. A lot of pedestrian connections that you see that, that we've been trying to encourage. But again, a lot of, a lot of respect to Brandon and his team to kind of bring these properties together. We're not, still not quite sure how he did it. I know that we're not there yet, before we're getting there. But again, this is, this is one that the city is, is investing in because we see the, the overall public benefits of the city. So we had a virtual Good Neighbor meeting on April 24th. We had about six people attended and, you know, which, which is surprising. This is a big project. We did a lot of notices. And to have only six people show up was, we always like people to show up, but the people that did attend were generally supportive of it and thought this was great. So that's, that's always great to hear. And again, so we have two findings, one related to the zoning and the other to the preliminary plat. And so staff recommends Planning Commission accept those listed findings and forward the request to the city council with a recommendation for approval. Thank you.
Thanks, Russ. What an applicant presentation.
Hello, everyone. Brandon Pratt, Lion Development Group. Don't have a presentation, but happy to answer any questions if anybody has anything.
Excellent. Thanks, Brandon. Any public comments on this one? Randy? Good? Okay. Questions, comments from the commission?
What'd you say about Commercial Drive? It eventually will come to Zeller?
Yeah, so there. Yeah, we own the land. We acquired it. So we, next couple fiscal, I don't think it's not this next fiscal year, the following fiscal year. Yeah. That was a big acquisition, and we saw an opportunity. And I, you know, these are the things here, which you really have to pay attention to sometimes. We saw an opportunity to acquire the land and make that connection. And it's, it's programmed and scheduled. So that's, that's going to be a great, and to help serve this connect, this development, too.
Yeah.
And I mean, you know, that, I think that helped drive this. And, you know, it's, it's, it's never quite the same. But, you know, in a comprehensive plan, when we, we adopted that in 2023, it kind of envisioned this property being redeveloped and that road kind of coming up through there. So it's kind of cool to see some of these things that we kind of envisioned kind of come together. But you can see the trail east-west connecting to the bike trail. You know, love for people to come up the trail, just take a hard left and come into the development, hopefully have amenities for them there. And, you know, I heard something the other day, which was, you know, as much as we knock on retail and those types of things, the one thing we learned through COVID, you know, even though everybody, I'm sure here buys online, we still want, we still want these physical places because, especially COVID, right? COVID has realized that we, we want to be around other people. We want to have these experiences. So we trust the vision that So we trust the vision that they're working on. They're, they're creating an experience here. And that's what I think makes places unique.
And frankly, they've got a pretty strong reputation of what they're doing up here in North Liberty already.
For sure, yeah.
Really nice to see.
Yeah, this would be an exciting development, whatever it turns out to be. Now, I like the change in the zoning to be able to get the buildings closer to the road, a little more urban.
Yeah, some places doing with what we call overlay districts. I am not a fan of overlay districts and overlay districts are, are, you keep your base zoning, but then you, you change it. And it's, it's, it's never something that is, it's, it's like hatch, hatch lines on a map. And it's never quite apparent to, you know, you get people, oh, the zoning C3. And I looked at the rules, wait, oh, wait a minute, there's, there's special rules. Let's just change the zoning to, to be something different. And we'll make it specific to this geographic area, you know, Zeller, Cherry Railroad to here. We can always expand it later if, if like we have some opportunities on the west side or something like that. But, you know, the, the idea is to kind of create something that's just unique for this district.
When you talk about experience, the, some of the riverfront down in Iowa City, behind Big Grove there or Iowa River Landing, some of these areas where bicyclists and we're becoming these communities and we're just attracting a lot of attention and a lot of people visiting. And I love that.
And I mean, the, the, the trail on the creek there, I mean, what a wonderful amenity. And I really, the, the infrastructure that we've done is really just, sometimes you say build it and they'll come, it's, I, you know, I think we just have such an active community. And I have no doubt that people will, will ride their bikes into here and walk in here.
Any other questions, comments? Not, can I get a, can I get a motion for a recommendation to the council?
I'll move that the planning commission accept the listed findings and forward the zoning map amendment, rezoning and preliminary subdivision plot to the city council with a recommendation for approval.
I'll second that motion.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Sure. Willer?
Aye.
Ahern?
Aye.
Heisler?
Aye.
Bafki?
Aye.
Janiezer?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brandon.
Good to see you.
All right, approval of the previous minutes. Make it a motion to approve the previous minutes.
I move to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody posed? No, okay. Do we have, are we worried about old business, new business? No?
Changed it.
No, I need to, okay.
I changed, you see it on there? Now it's.
Oh, but it's planning updates.
All that.
So busy looking.
All of that, I don't really even have any updates.
So busy, all right.
Instead of old business, new business.
We did everything this month, there's nothing left for next month.
We do have a couple of things.
Russ, do you have any planning updates? Since you did the work, since you put the work in, I'll read it. All right?
No, no.
Thank you for not having any updates, Russ.
I was going to ask Brandon, when is Starbucks opening, man?
It's soon, I think it's, didn't we just hear this week?
I've already been to Jersey Mike's, Starbucks got open stand.
I think it's this week.
Watch it every day.
Yeah.
Planning update, Starbucks is opening.